Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Northampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting. It is Wednesday, February 26, 2025. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We'll start out with a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. I'd like everybody to think about Officer Andrew Duarte, who lost his life in the middle of Pennsylvania defending a hospital earlier this week in your moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Before we start, just a quick announcement. Supervisor Gasper and Moore send apologies. Neither could make it this evening, so it's just the three of us. No special presentations tonight. Just as a reminder, there's two opportunities for public comment this evening. The first opportunity is for agenda items only, and you can sign up in the back on the table. And I'll call you to the microphone. Have you just tell us your name, and you can speak on any of the agenda items for the evening. The second opportunity is at the end of the meeting, which is open public comment. And you can speak on any subject you'd like, and I'll do the same thing. We use a list. I'll call you by name, and you can come up and say whatever you want to say for the board. So, do we have any agenda items? Okay. First, Liz Yous. Are you on the right list?
Yeah.
Okay.
We were going to be doing other stuff and then come in.
No, we go right to this. So just state your name for the board, and if you are a resident.
Okay. I'm Liz Yous. I am a resident of Churchville.
Thank you.
And I'm speaking about item 9K, the Mill Race Inn. I implore you not to support this proposal. We all know that generational wealth is created by land ownership. This property is the generational wealth of this township. People move to Northampton for open space, not overcrowding. I believe in land ownership rights, and as we watch most large parcels converted to housing developments, I don't begrudge those landowners. But I am told that the township, this is township-controlled land. It should be developed, should not be developed in the houses. This township does not need more houses, more people, more cars, certainly not at the worst intersection in the township. This development will exacerbate an already terrible traffic situation. As supervisors, your number-one job is to maintain and/or improve the lives of the current residents. And every decision you make should be viewed through that lens. Does this project do that? I don't believe so. In the past, Barry, Kim, and Adam have supported open-space initiatives and supported the rail trail. This property is unique in that it is a beautiful waterfront parcel that could be the cornerstone, a keystone, in a greenway that connects the Churchville Nature Center and Play Wiki Farm Park. The goal of the trail was to connect people and parks. Making this a greenway advances that goal. The township should look into finding a corporate partner or community fundraising to turn this parcel into a park, not sell it off to develop more housing in the name of a short-term game. This is a generational wealth that should be preserved. Once it is sold and converted into housing, it's gone forever. I understand that the purpose of this meeting tonight is to vote to finalize this plan. You have the option to vote no. If you don't wish to do that, you could certainly have the option to postpone the decision. There are a lot of people in this township that do not want this, and you should take the thoughts and wishes of those tax-paying citizens into consideration. These are voters you serve as elected officials. There is no need to rush. The public should have more input. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. Dawn White? Hello, just state your name again, and if you're a resident. Thanks.
A little short. Yeah, Dawn White, Holland, PA. My biggest worry about building a building that's that tall, four stories tall, if you're including the garages underneath and stuff, is I feel like it's going to be a precedent that more buildings are going to wind up squeezing into little spaces in our township and our village here. And, you know, four stories is really tall. I mean, you know, all the surrounding apartments in the local towns, they don't go over like three, you know? Like even Feasterville, they're like three stories tall. My other concern is the roads. It's just like Holland Road, Chincapin Road, and Buck Road. And then you're going to add this road or the development all in a short, little span. And we, I don't know. And then you got the Wawa and possibly the gas station, if that ever comes back. And that worries me because I'm just like picturing accidents, you know? And this is like a pretty big complex. I think they said 33 homes are going to be in there. And, you know, there's going to be an entrance and an exit, from what I could tell. And that's all going to be messing up the traffic flow. And I know they're going to build the bridge bigger, but I just don't think that that's going to help the backup from people coming in and out of all these places trying to go into one little area. And that concerns me. The other concern I have is the water. We know that it's flooded there, and the mill race was destroyed, pretty much. And, I mean, if they're building all these homes right along that creek, I mean, is that going to like make the water go down and flood somewhere else? Are these people going to be flooded when they have their, you know, apartments? You know, I just, that's a worry I have. I just feel like it's just not, a four-story building is just not like the rest of the town. I mean, we're all like, we're all developments. Even the townhomes and apartments that we do have, they're in developments, and it's not like right on the main road. So that's my big concern. And I don't know, I know the roads are going to be fixed by the state, and the bridge is going to be widened. And unfortunately, I heard they're going to tear down that little house. But, I mean, is this project going to take place all at the same time? I mean, we don't even know how long it's going to take or when they're actually going to do the road repairs. And if they start building this before anything else is done, that worries me, too. I mean, it's going to be total chaos in an already chaotic road. But thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Alyssa, is that right?
Yes.
Alyssa White? Okay. Hi. Just state your name again, and if you're a resident.
Okay. Alyssa White, resident of Holland.
Hi.
I pretty much have the same bulletin points as the previous speaker. Traffic congestion, precedent, watershed. And another point is the roadway itself. Is it going to open up the roadway to becoming, like Buck Road specifically, to becoming a larger road down the road? Because once the bridge is done and more homes are there, the bridge itself is not going to alleviate traffic congestion. Because the, just the bottleneck right there, the topography of the area, it's very restrictive of the roadways. Even if you widen the bridge right in that particular section, the road itself cannot be widened that much because of all the hard rock and everything right there. The watershed, as I understand it, quite a few years ago, the Wawa had applied to create a gas station where it currently is, but it was rejected because the gas station would have affected the watershed right directly below it. And my concern with that is that if that was rejected for the watershed being directly below it, all of the impertinial surface created by 33 condos is going to also create issues for the watershed. During construction is going to create issues for the watershed, as well as after it's already built, it's going to create issues because the water will have nowhere to go. And let's see, so that was that. And the traffic watershed, what was the other point? You weren't listening. Watershed. Oh, yes, and the precedent as well. So basically, piggybacking off of what the previous speaker said, once you create a precedent for allowing a variance, it creates, it opens a doorway to creating more variances. Like, I know in, just in my neighborhood alone, there are a lot of homes that are being built where it looks like there's like two homes right on top of each other. And we're like a very traditional neighborhood, so it's very out of place. So once that starts going in, all the neighbors are like, oh, well, let me do that, too. And they kind of have to, because once one does it, they have to let the others have the variance as well. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the only names I have on the list, but I do know a few people did come in afterwards. And so give people some public opportunity to, anybody that walked in after I got the list, would they like to speak on this? Joe, you're raising your hand. Would you like to speak on this? Okay.
Yes, Joe Johnson, I'm a resident. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board. So it's my understanding that the Redevelopment Authority owns this property, correct? They're in control of that. So, and that this deal is being put forth. It looks like it's probably going to go through. But my question is, what I'd like to hear tonight, anyway, is about the financing. Do they already have their financing? Is it, you know, public or private? Or are they still looking for their financing? And if they're still looking for it, is there anything built into this agreement, like a timeline, in other words? So we don't get, you know, this project doesn't, can't get financing, or there's some other holdup that the township is not held hostage by this project? And that's what I hope to hear tonight.
Thanks, Joe. All right. If there's no more public comment, I'm just going to move on to consent items. The minutes were advertised or distributed. If there's any corrections or revisions, let me know now. If not, we'll move that into consent. Thank you. Accounts payable, Kim?
Yes, I have the bills list for January 29, 2025. Total all funds, $683,561.61. I have the bills list for February 12, 2025. Total all funds, $1,359,180.80. And I have the bills list for February 26, 2025. Total all funds, $725,388.59.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions for Kim? I have a few other housekeeping consent items. I'll just review real quickly. In the consent agenda, we have two planning modules. That's for two single-family dwellings that are asking for DEP approval to put on lot septic systems. One is at 149 Bridgestone Drive, and the other one is on Iron Works Circle, but there's no address yet for that. So we'll submit that. Bucks County Roses had a couple of minor revisions to their land development plan. The road went from a public road to a private road. They requested an area for access to the future rail trail in their plan. And they requested a waiver on the sidewalk on Buck Road, where there are no sidewalks and probably not a great place to walk over there, anyway. And then finally, we had a snow event on January 19. We normally declare a snow emergency under those events. So we do that on the fly and then declare it at the next meeting. So this is declaring and rescinding the snow emergency from January 19. If there's no questions on the consent items, I move to, or I'll ask for a motion to move the consent items as presented.
So moved.
Second, Kim?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have a public hearing, and this is to consider a zoning ordinance amendment to the village overlay and supplemental regulations. I'll open the hearing. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This relates to a zoning ordinance amendment to advance the purpose of the village overlay district to adopt the blighted waterfront redevelopment area. I will note that this ordinance was available for public review on the township website and was properly advertised. In addition, the township and county planning commissions have both reviewed the ordinance and have recommended its approval. If I may make a motion?
Please.
I move for approval of ordinance number 623, which amends the Northampton Township zoning ordinance, specifically Chapter 27, for the purpose of creating the blighted waterfront redevelopment area.
I'll second it.
Before we move on that, I will give an opportunity for public comment on this as well. Anybody'd like to?
Can I add this?
You may. Sure.
I just wanted to add to the, what I said before about the mill race. I've seen pictures of the interior of that building, and when they say they're going to redo the mill race, it's like the redoing, they're building new because that mill race is like complete gut job. It's rotten wood and splintered, and, you know, it was in that flood. And it's, I don't understand why they're even going to bother with that. I mean, I'd rather not see these tall buildings go up and have that torn down because it's just a rebuild. It's not anything historical going to be left of it. So that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a motion and a second. Any comment? Bob, any further comment?
No.
None for me. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up will be, consider preliminary and final plan of subdivision and land development for the Mill Race Inn. Bob?
So I move for the preliminary final subdivision and land development approval for the Mill Race Development SLD 23-2, subject to compliance with the Township Engineers Review Letter dated November 5, 2024; the Township Traffic Engineers Review Letter dated November 4, 2024; and the Fire Marshals Review Memo dated December 3, 2024. Approval is subject to the following conditions.
I think you can, if you don't mind, hold up there. We'll let him do the presentation.
I will. Yep. Thank you. I'll wait for the conditions.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. Hi. If you guys can introduce yourselves.
Absolutely. Thank you. Good evening. Mike McGinnis from Begley Carlin here behalf of the Mill Race Inn.
Heath Dumack, Dumack Engineering.
Hi.
All right. Thank you. Just briefly, everyone here is obviously familiar with this property and where it's located, but I'd like to provide a bit of background about how we've arrived at this point and what we're proposing this evening. The subject property consists of two parcels. We refer to them, and we'll be referring to them tonight, as "the property." But specifically, the parcels are TNP 3126-592 and 3126-594, and are located at 183 and 207 Buck Road. The properties were, until a couple of minutes ago, zoned exclusively in the C2 General Commercial Office District, as well as subject to the village overlay district requirements. The supervisors just revised that to authorize development pursuant to the blighted waterfront redevelopment area as well. For the record, the proposal is multifaceted. The project has gone through some revisions over the years. Obviously, the site has many challenges due to its composition and topography. Going to summarize what we're proposing first, and then go back a little bit into the development history. We are proposing the construction of two four-story condominium buildings. They're going to be thoughtfully developed. You can see Heath just put up the renderings before you for consideration. The interior is going to have elevators. There are associated parking improvements, going to be serviced by public water and sewer and underground stormwater facilities. There will be 33 dwelling units, and a portion of this relates to the redevelopment of the Mill Race Inn itself, which will have an approximately 2,050-square-foot footprint of office space. These will be age-restricted, 55-plus-for-sale-market-rate condominium units. There will be an association, which is going to be created. We, of course, will supply the documentation with the association creation to Mr. Peizo for his office to review. I will note, because one of the public comments this evening, a gentleman had a question about how this is financed. And just for the record, this is privately financed. It is not contingent upon our client securing any additional financing to further development. The topographical challenges have been significant for some of the comments that have been raised this evening, relating to primarily the severe grading on the property, the odd orientation of the two lots, which are going to be affected, and due to the fact that this property backs onto the Mill Creek. A portion of the property is located towards the rear in the 100-year floodplain. We have spent a lot of time getting to this point. Mr. Dumack's office has been very careful and thorough with the plan design and the development. The development, in fact, because of that design and due to some of the dialogue with the township and township consultants, reduced the unit count. At one point in the not-too-distant past, we were proposing 39 units. That has been reduced to 33 units. We had also originally proposed an easement with respect to the adjoining parcel, the 004 parcel, to be specific. That has been redesigned to a lot-line change, which is before you for consideration, which we think greatly simplifies the project and the project logistics. This also allows the parking, which we have as parking improvements with this project, to be located on one site post-lot-line change. We did appear in front of the Planning Commission back in April of 2024, and we received a recommendation for approval of the project. I also want to note, for the reasons that I just stated, and the complexity of this site and the design and the number of revisions, special appreciation for Mr. Peizo's office. The authority has provided a lot of comments that have allowed us to get to this point. And of course, Amanda and her team have been very helpful. We have a number of waivers, but again, those waivers primarily relate to the fact that this is a very unique site that has been very carefully designed. So other than that, and the waivers as stated in the review letter, everything else in the township review letters are/will comply. We are very happy to finally arrive at this stage to redevelop and develop successfully, what we acknowledge is a very important part of this community into what we think is an exciting new project that is going to bring new homeowners to the township. So as I indicated, Mr. Dumack is here. He's happy to go through any of the layout and the design components. If there are questions, we're happy to answer. Any questions relating to waivers, if that is desired as well. Otherwise, again, we thank you for your consideration this evening.
Before we finish the motion, again, any questions?
Well, I will, a resident who's here this evening commented on the fact that it's a four-story building. It's hard to tell from this rendering, the elevation. Can you describe what the sightlines will be from the street level?
Sure. The lot itself slopes away from Buck Road. There's basically a plateau, and then it steeply drops off from the street. Realistically, it will look like a two-story building. Two stories of this, the elevation drop is in excess of 20 feet.
Thank you. No, nothing further?
I don't have any questions you want to continue with?
Yeah.
Anything else you want to add? I'm sorry.
No. Thank you again.
So I'll read each, subject to the following conditions. I'll read each and ask if you approve of each. The first would be waivers shall be approved subject to compliance with the items identified in the November 5, 2024 correspondence from Gilmore Associates as they relate to conditional requirements for waiver support. Are you in agreement?
That is agreeable, yes.
Two, the full plan shall be revised to identify a lot-line change so that all units are one-tax parcel as opposed to an easement for dwelling unit construction. Is that agreeable?
That is, yes.
Three, the applicant shall enter into a land-development agreement, an escrow agreement in the form acceptable to the township solicitor and engineer. This shall include a stormwater management maintenance and operations agreement. In addition, all documents related to shared parking and access shall be provided. Is that agreeable?
It is.
Four, homeowners' association documents shall be reviewed by the township solicitor. Is that agreeable?
Yes.
Five, a fee in lieu of recreation open space shall be submitted in the amount of $7,195.46 for each new unit per the terms of the development agreement. Is that agreeable?
It is.
Six, a fee in lieu of sidewalks is required in the amount of $19,473, as calculated by the township engineer. This fee shall be payable per the terms of the land-development agreement. Is that agreeable?
Yes.
Seven, the township shall have final review and approval of building architectural renderings to ensure compliance with the village overlay district requirements. Is that agreeable?
It is.
And eight, the applicant is responsible for obtaining any outside approvals that may be necessary, including, but not limited to, the DEP, the Conservation District, PennDOT, and the municipal authority. Further approval is granted for submission of any documents that may be required as part of the sewage facilities planning process. Is that agreeable?
Yes.
And I previously motioned, I'll remotion so the record's clear. I move for preliminary final subdivision and land development approval of the Mill Race Inn Development SLD 23-2, subject to compliance with the Township Engineers Review Letter dated November 5, 2024; the Township Traffic Engineers Review Letter dated November 4, 2024; and the Fire Marshals Review Memo dated December 3, 2024, subject to the conditions I've read into the record.
I have a second?
I have a second.
Any further comments, Bob?
I will. This is obviously, in some respects, a hot-button issue, and for good reason. But I will note that in our research, and this is long before my time on the board, certainly, the flood that ultimately led to the condemnation of this area occurred in 1999. And this is, to date, the only plan that has made it to this, we'll say, stage. And one of the common complaints that I hear in this position is about exactly how blighted that area is. And it, in its current state of blight, presents potential liabilities for the township. It is frankly an eyesore for the township. And the number of people who have expressly said, why can't we do something with this area? You hear this evening from Mr. McGinnis why it's so difficult to have done something with this area. And here we have a plan that I think is for the betterment of the township and solves many of the problems that have been presented to me from residents. In all fairness, we have residents here expressing other problems, and I think they're legitimate, and I think they've been addressed. And I'm satisfied that although there may be some additional traffic concerns, they'll be largely constrained to the residents themselves of these new residences. And this is something that has, for no reason of anyone on this day, has taken far too long to be corrected. That area cannot remain in its current state. It is unsafe. It is not a benefit to this township. And for those reasons, I approve.
Oh, Kim? Any comments?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Salzer. I have to tell you, I've been on this board for 13 years, and this has been a problem. The Mill Race has been a problem since I've been on the board. An eyesore. We have had to have people go over there and cut bushes and try to secure the area. And, I mean, this has been an ongoing... And I mean, this has been an ongoing problem. We've tried to, to find a solution, get other people. There was one guy that had a restaurant. And the one thing that we, we, as a board, we have always wanted, we wanted to keep the mill. We wanted to keep that historical part. People have a lot of sentimental memories of that, of the mill race. I feel like this has been, this is a great idea, and you're making, you're making lemonades out of lemons because it's definitely a tough property. Is it going to be, you know, it, it's never easy when you're doing construction. And, you know, it, it's going to be traffic issues coming in and out, and, and it's going to be a little bit of a problem at the beginning when they're, when they're building everything. But I think in the long run, I think it's going to be a good project. It's going to make our, our township look pretty, and I love the fact that it's 55 and older. We have a lot of residents that are in big houses, and maybe it's getting too big, too much for them. And they still want to stay in North Hampton. This would be a great place for them to go. And I, I, I think it has a lot of merit, this, this project. You know, I, I'm, I think it's a good, it's a good idea. I do.
Thanks, Kim. Thank you for your presentation, and I think, I can say thank you. I think you answered a few of the questions. I think the financing question you answered. And then somebody, somebody brought up, and I'm sorry if I don't remember who, about maybe a potential trail back there. And I don't think that's off the table because of this development. I think that if that ever wanted to occur, I think that still could occur. There's, there's fair amount of land across the creek and around it that, that wouldn't, wouldn't prevent that from happening.
And we, of course, will continue to work with the township to the extent that we're able to, obviously.
Thank you. Just, I mean, what you guys said is really how I feel. I will say probably 10 or 20 to 1, I get more complaints about the blighted look and when are you going to do something with that versus, you know, what we, what we have done. It is a very challenging site, so I do get it, and I appreciate the hard work that's going in. I do want to thank everybody for coming and making your comments, too. It's important to, to come out and be heard.
I have an addition for the motion.
Mr. Paizo has an addition.
It's not an, it's not an, it's not an addition so much as just a clarification. As far as the condition regarding the lot line change, if, if we could have the motion reflect that the lot line change will be consistent with the plan that was submitted to the township prepared by Mr. Dumack entitled Lot Line Change Plot, Lot Line Change Plan 183 and 207 Buck Road dated May 31, 2023, with four revisions. So that was submitted, and that's the, the lot line change that would be approved as part of this action if it's approved in a few moments.
That is correct.
And would be reflected on the record plans.
Yes.
And just for everybody here, I mean, we, and you, you heard this, we had them scale that back because of the way the lot lines were. We thought there was just way too many units on that lot at that point. They scaled it back to what you see today, and we felt that this was much more reasonable than the additional six units, which really made that area much tighter than it looks today. Okay, any other comments? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Carries. Thank you. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for everybody that came out tonight as well. Do you want to do a quick change?
Sure.
So two quick housekeeping things. I don't want Lisa in the back to yell at me. I did not bang the gavel at the end of the public hearing earlier when we ended up, sorry. And we're going to do a quick solicitor change. Mr. Paizo has to leave this evening, and our good friend Ken Faris is going to come up and take his spot. So give us one second while we do a quick change. Yeah. Thanks, Heath.
Have a good night, guys.
Good night.
Thank you all. Have a pleasant evening.
Thanks.
To the extent that Ms. Rose was saying earlier about the problem with the property since she came on the board, it should be noted that the township's been trying to address that property in terms of going after the property owners for the blighted condition all, for the better part of 20 years. And resulted in the RDA condemning the property back in 2014. So it's been a decade of trying to get the property redeveloped at all times with the preservation of the mill being of paramount concern. So just wanted to make sure the record reflects that.
Thanks, Kim. Thanks for the history.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, next up, consider a resolution authorizing destruction of documents. Kim?
Yes. The township periodically reviews its paper files and completes an inventory of files that can be discarded under the township's record retention policy, which is aligned with the Pennsylvania Municipal Records Act. To comply with this act, the board needs to pass a resolution specifying the records before approving their disposal. And with that, can I make a motion?
Please.
I move to adopt Resolution R-25-6 authorizing the destruction of certain township records meeting the minimum retention requirements of the Pennsylvania Municipal Records Act.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any comments?
No.
We, we follow this by the letter of the law. We do what we are supposed to do with destroying of records. That's all I'm going to say.
Thanks, Kim. Anything else?
Nothing.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Carries. Thank you. Next up, liaison reports. Back to you, Kim.
Okay. First, I'd like to talk about the Senior Center. The center is growing in leaps and bounds, and it has welcomed 30 new members and 15 renewals since January. The center will host their first-ever Mardi Gras breakfast on Tuesday, March 4. Tickets are $22 on sale at the Senior Center now. On Thursday, March 6, center members and their guests will be attending the Ultimate Elvis Show at the Bristol Riverside Theater. The trip includes a delicious lunch at the historic King George II Inn. And guess what? The trip is sold out. New extended hours. Visit the center Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 5:00, Tuesdays and Thursdays from 8:30 to 8:30. And you can always access information at the center's website at northhamptonsc.com. Next, I'd like to talk about Parks and Rec. The spring/summer brochure, so you could see it. This is what it looks like. Don't throw it out when you get it in the mail this week. The addition includes a bingo bash on Friday, March 14, from 6:30 to 8:30 at the Senior Center, a hugely popular breakfast with the bunny event on April 12, and 18 one-week specialty camps offered this summer. A PDF of the full brochure is on the Park and Rec's homepage. Camp registration is still open and filling fast. Currently, 455 resident campers are registered, 10 more campers than our total in 2024. Non-resident registration opens this Saturday, March 1. All camps are expected to fill completely. Swim club, swim team, and lesson registration opened online late last week. Swim lessons are filling fast, and we already have 30 member registrations. With the success of the concert series last year, Parks and Rec has extended the fun in 2025. Enjoy 10 weeks of concerts, including a children's concert with the, and the bands Gilligan's Yacht Club, Fun's A Love, Midlife Chrysalis, Devlin, 80's Revolution, which is my favorite, they were fabulous last year, and local favorite, The Cherry Lane Band. We will kick off the summer concert series and the summer season with a Sun 'n Fun Fest. After last week, we really could use a Sun 'n Fun Fest, at the Civic Center with live music, food, and beverage, tons of vendors on Friday, June 6, from 5:30 to 9:30. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Kim. As I said, Paula and Barry are not here. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a couple things on behalf of the municipal authority. The first would be, I guess it's a mixed bag. It's good and bad news. The Buck Road Bridge project is expected to begin approximately within the next 30 days. So the director has indicated they will provide more specific updates as they become available. Please go to the website for the municipal authority for specifics as they become available. I cannot provide an exact date yet, but an approximation of within the next 30 days seems to be reasonable. The second would be my monthly update on the EPFOs issue. There was a meeting yesterday with the director and the federal government. I think I mentioned in previous reports that there are various phases. Phase one of the project is approved and funded. I had also mentioned previously that the federal government would be issuing and authoring letters to all of those persons who reside within phase one. I am sorry to report, although not shocking to those who understand how the federal government operates, they have lagged and not gotten those letters out as anticipated. The good news is that the, the authority has effectively their contractors ready to go. So it should be off the ground shortly. We are waiting for the technicality of the federal government to finalize what it is required to do, but we are closer to beginning phase one. No one up here is pleased with the speed at which things are moving, but they are moving, and pressure is continuously applied wherever possible, and all possible solutions continue to be looked into. That's all I have.
Thanks, Bob. Just if I can add one point, the, Bob talked about the Buck Road Bridge project is going to start, and that is the pre-work by the Water Authority.
Yes.
For the future PennDOT project. There is, there's water lines and sewer lines there that have to all be moved and adjusted. So that, there's going to be a disruption in traffic there while they do the, move those lines, and the bridge will be back to normal, and then sometime again in the future is when PennDOT will come in and do the bridge.
Correct. Thank you for clarifying that. There, there's also going to be phases in that project. This is the authority's portion of the project and their phase, which will then lead to phase two.
Couple steps in there. I just have a couple of quick things that I want to report. First of all, keep an eye, if you haven't signed up for the township email service, it's a great way to keep up to date on, on what's happening in the township. You can select the kind of things you want to see, and anytime anything new happens or there's some event coming, you'll, you'll have it fresh in your inbox. I suggest you do it if you go to the website, there's a button to click right there.
Right.
And just, just put your email in, and you'll, you'll get pretty fresh, fresh updates. It's also good for snow emergencies. I think sometimes you send the school closings out through that, so it's, it's, it's a really good way to, to hear what's happening. The reason I say that is the fire department is going to be offering free CPR training to the community. We're going to pick, will be four times this year where we'll have people, there's, there'll be a sign-up list. You can go in, sign up, come to the firehouse, and it's free. It's what we call layperson CPR, where you don't have to do the breathing. CPR is very effective without the breathing, and a lot of people don't like to do that. So you can watch the fire department Facebook page, but if you sign up, it'll also come out through a web blast from the township. Also from the fire department is our smoke detector assistance program. If you know somebody that is having trouble either changing the batteries, sometimes some of our seniors need some assistance, or if you visit someone and you notice that they don't have smoke detectors working, whatever, if you give us a call, free of charge for our township residents here, we'll, we're happy to go out to their home, take a look at what they have. If they need a detector, we'll provide one, but we'll make sure that everybody has the right protection. There's nothing worse than that 2:30 a.m. beeping, and they can't get to the ceiling to get it. And we really don't want some of our folks climbing ladders. We're happy to do it for them. That's all I have for tonight. Next, oh, I didn't mention earlier, Bob Pellegrino, our township manager, was not here, and sitting in the manager's chair tonight is Bill Wirtz. So you'll do the managers and assistant managers' report.
Happy to be here. Thank you. I'm pleased to announce that today, Pennsylvania Department of Transportation announced that they have awarded $20.4 million in grants for the Automated Red Light Enforcement Program, acronym ARLE. I'm pleased to announce that North Hampton Township received a grant in the amount of $706,000 and, I'm sorry, $760,000 for improvements to pedestrian and operational efficiencies on Buck Road. This will be at the intersections of Middle Holland and Stony Ford, as well as Buck Road and East Village and West Village roads. This will include crosswalks, curb cuts, ADA ramps where necessary. This is, this will be a significant improvement to that area. So that, look for that in the future, another project funded by the grant. It's a 10% match from the township, so the township's contribution's only $82,000 to this project. That's all I have to report.
Fantastic news. Thanks, Bill. Well, you got to sit down for solicitor's report, Ken?
Allow me to report that there is no solicitor's report for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And our engineers' report.
Sure. Just one update. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, regarding the North Hampton Crossing Basin retrofit project. So that's, again, at the intersection of Holland and Upper Holland roads, and I'm happy to report that, that construction will be starting likely either at the end of March or early April. So hopefully, you know, come summertime, we have a naturalized basin in that area.
Good.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda. Thank you very much. Next, up to public comment. Joe, you're up. Just your name and whether you're a resident, please.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Joe Johnson. I am a resident. Last month, I believe, at the meeting, it was, bid openings were given for the, for the sale of the police station. There were only two bids. I was just wondering what, what the update is and why it hasn't moved forward.
Sure. Is there anything else before we?
No, that's it.
Okay, thanks.
The township, the administration, and the board are still reviewing those applications. We anticipate information to be discussed in the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, the meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.